Yeah, I just, I haven't personally been at any big events, so I keep one in my pocket and one at a time as I see people try to remember to grab it out.
What are you doing tomorrow for lunch?
Um, I don't think anything specific. Is that Rotary?
Yeah, would you like to go to Rotary Month?
Sure. Um, yeah, what does it entail?
Let's just go in and go in for the meeting, you'll get dinner, we'll have a little program, probably be a Christmas concert tomorrow. I'll announce she was a guest.
Thank you.
Also announce that you're gonna bring, that you have some thing, your sheet. Well, just do that. How about 12 o'clock Rotary Room is there?
Okay.
Be there about 10 minutes early if you can. All right. Okay, are we all about ready to go? Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 7:07 and it's time for, we're a little late for our regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council here at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin, on Monday, December 17th. First item is called Order and Roll Call.
Roll call shows all councilors present except for councillor Lupke.
Second is Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number three, Special Orders of Day Announcements. Well, there are none, so we'll move on to four. There are no public hearings either. Number five is Citizens Participation. We've reached the point in the agenda where for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting but may refer the speaker to staff or assistants. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. At this point, I do not have any sheets indicating someone wishing to speak, so we'll go ahead and offer it up to the floor. And are there any persons who wishing to speak under Citizens Participation? Second call for any persons to come forward and speak under Citizens Participation. Third and final call for any persons to come forward and speak under Citizens Participation. Hearing none, I'll close the Citizens Participation portion of the agenda and we'll move forward to the Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on any of these items unless the council member shows requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order business and considered at this point on the agenda. Does any councillor wish anything removed from the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Levy, second by Sprite, sir. All in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the Consent Agenda passes 6-0. Item number seven, Ordinances, there are none. Eight, we have some appointments however. For the Appointment Review Committee, we have incumbent Henry Clement for a term ending December 31st, 2015, and incumbent Marlene Erickson for a term ending December 31st, 2015. Order Review, incumbent Bobby Beaman for a term expiring December 31st, 2017. For the Business Improvement District, we have incumbent Tiffany Warren as the Beloit College Representative for a term expiring December 31st, 2015. Incumbent Richard F. Holbert, owner occupant, for a term expiring December 31st, 2015. Incumbent Tom Hankins, property owner, for a term expiring December 31st, 2015. Douglas Kelly, owner occupant replacing Jason Braun of the Beloit Family Eye Care SC, 540 East Grand Avenue, to a term expiring December 31st, 2014. Jeff Radeski, non-owner occupant replacing Brad Austin at Radeski Insurance Agency, 418 Pleasant Street, to a term expiring December 31st, 2015. And Betsy Schmikchen, property owner replacing Christine Schlicking of the Villager, 429 East Grand Avenue, for a term expiring December 31st, 2014. And for the Community Development Authority, Nali Adama, for a term expiring 31 December, 2016. The motion to approve the appointments is read.
So, Mr. President.
Moved by Van Vogard, second by DeForest. Sorry about that, Sheila. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointments are approved, 6-0. I would like to announce the following vacancies. To the Alcohol Beverage and Licensing Control Committee, we have one vacancy for resident. Appointment Review Committee, there are two vacancies for residents. The Board of Appeals has two vacancies alternates for residents. The Board of Ethics, one vacancy for former city councillor, three vacancies for residents. Community Development Authority has one vacancy for resident. Equal Opportunity and Human Relations Committee has one vacancy for resident. The Municipal Golf Committee has one vacancy for youth representative. The Municipal Library Board has one vacancy for resident of Beloit or towns adjacent to the city. Parks and Recreation Conservation Advisory Commission has one vacancy for youth. Traffic Review Committee has one vacancy for residents. If anyone has an interest in filling one of these very, very important citizens' commissions, please contact the city clerk. Thank you. Item number nine, Councillor Activities and Upcoming Events. Let's start with councillor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to especially welcome the students in the audience, we're so pleased to have you here. Mr. President, I have some former students in the audience, I think they're ready to help you out with my name if you weren't able to get it. It's nice to see you. And I just wanted to make sure that you heard just now in our meeting, there are two committee vacancies for youth. And I hope that some of you might consider getting involved in your local government right now. There's two vacancies, one in the Parks Recreation and Conservation Committee and one in the Municipal Golf Committee. And that would be a way for you to get some immediate experience on a local government committee, so I hope you'll consider doing that. If you're interested, you can obtain application actually online, you can download it, or you can contact our city clerk's office and she'll send you one. I do want to share that I was able to attend Grinnell Hall's holiday show at our senior center honoring John Cal Kurts, who's retiring, and I was pleased to be there to celebrate the incredible work that he's provided to the senior center. Enjoyed the popcorn and talking with some of our older residents and again, just very pleased to be there as part of that event. Thank you.
Councillor Van Vogard.
Two things, congratulations to all those who participated in the holodezal event a couple of Friday nights ago. It was very successful from everything I could see. And the other thing would be a word of caution, I think we're gonna run out of this nice weather. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration says Thursday's the day. Whether we're gonna get it a lot or a little, I don't know, but let's all remember how to drive on snow and ice and slow down and not have too many crashes.
If you haven't opened up the city's new webpage, it went up today. It's really fine piece of work. It's well organized, great graphics, same webpage address. Holly Dazzle was another great success, I think one of the best ones I've seen in the time that I've been here. The streets were crowded, there was no snow, not even rain, but look for it next year, it's really worth being there.
Councillor Levy.
I would also like to echo what everyone else said about Holliday Zoll. I was also able to attend, and I think it's getting bigger and bigger each year, so I think it heard a lot of positive comments about it. Also wanna welcome the students here this evening, and I often say that this is where your voice could be heard as well. So if you're sitting around and you're saying, "There's nothing for us to do in Beloit", if you have ideas, this is where you can bring them and we could kinda work with you on different things that you may have. So we don't want you to just be living in the city, but we want you to be part of the city as well. So as you come to these meetings, if you think of something that's on your mind that you're unhappy with or that you like, we encourage you to come forward because some of us down here are getting old and we're not gonna be around forever, so we wanna know what the youth of Beloit is thinking as well because you are part of this community. So, and I think a lot of times the youth feel that their voice is not heard or valued, but the only way it is valued or heard is you have to come forward and let us know what you're thinking. So I just wanted to give you that little bit of advice and to let you know that even though it looks like on the agenda we're moving pretty quickly, we're gonna slow it down here and let you out by midnight tonight, so just want you to know that.
Mr. Vice President.
I have nothing to add this evening.
And I'm definitely, don't have anything to add either, so. All right. Item number 11, Reports from Boards and City Officers, item 11A.
Resolution approving the 2013 stray animal contract between the city of Beloit and the Dane County Humane Society and authorizing the execution thereof.
Good evening.
Ms. Jacobson.
It's nice without these lights. As you know, the Rock County Humane Society has provided the city of Beloit with stray animal contracting services for over 10 years. For several years, they have pursued limiting their quote-unquote "animal control" services, and they would like to remain just an adoption facility, which is part of their mission. And as you know, in 2013, the police department will be taking over humane officer duties in the city of Beloit by hiring additional CSOs or community service officers. In November last month, we brought forward a owned animal contract with Dane County, and now we're back here with a stray animal contract, which we've all been patiently awaiting. To lessen the burden on stray animals entering Rock County Humane Society, the city has the opportunity to enter into an agreement with both the Dane County Humane Society and the Rock County Humane Society, which everyone should know are definitely not associated with either government agency, Dane County or Rock County, which is often misconstrued. Combined, the city will have a safe location to bring stray animals both to safe locations both during the day and after hours on holidays, any given time. Attach as the proposed contract with Dane County and with Rock County, which staff has negotiated. The two key issues is that Rock County Humane Society's facility is overburdened with the amount of animals that come from specifically Beloit and Janesville, and also Dane County Humane Society will allow the city to drop off animals after hours, and so we think we've come up with a good arrangement so that all animals in the city of Beloit can be handled should they need to be, if they're stray. You can take any questions you have.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approved.
Moved by Levy, second by DeForest. Any questions or comments? Councillor DeForest.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. Thank you to Captain Tyler for your work on this, I really appreciate it. I know you spend a lot of time and effort trying to make this work, and I also appreciate your effort to try to provide us some comparisons of costs between using Dane County and Rock County Humane Societies. I wanted to just request that, as it appears like maybe it will come into fruition, if there will be in fact the building of a holding facility in Janesville, if you'll be sure to let us know about that and provide updates for us on that. I think some residents will be surprised if they have to, when they find out they have to transport animals all the way to Dane County, 'cause I know we have quite a few residents that are already transporting strays, which I'm sure will increase our costs then, 'cause then we'll be transporting them, I'm assuming. So I'm anxious to hear about that holding facility.
At this point, they can still drop off at Rock County during the day if they get them. And we would actually, the police department would prefer that if they do seclude an animal, like in their backyard or somewhere within a fenced-in area, that they would transport them, as you know, this is new to our CSO officers, and so I can just imagine that you guys have other projects for those CSO officers. And that being said, it is a time commitment to pick up the animal and transport it, if the animal is safe, certainly if it's a dangerous dog, as always, call the police department. But ideally, we would still work with Rock County as much we can, especially during the day.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 6-0. Item 11B.
A resolution approving the 2013 stray animal contract between the city of Beloit and the Rock County Humane Society and authorizing the execution thereof.
Same story, I don't really have much else to add. I certainly can answer questions.
Thank you.
Move approved.
Moved by Levy, second by Kincaid. Do you have a question on this one? Okay, so any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 11B passes 6-0. Item 11C.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an amended development agreement with Northstar Medical Radioisotopes LLC.
Good evening.
Ms. Yackey.
Before I provide my written report, I'm gonna introduce George Messina, who's the president/CEO of Northstar Medical Radioisotopes, and he's gonna give you folks a brief update of what he and his company has been up to since we entered into the original development agreement back in June of 2011. So, George?
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak this evening. Well, there's no doubt that we're taking a little bit longer than we had anticipated. However, it's not because there's a lack of interest. For us, it's been a matter of designing, redesigning, and redesigning our facility. At one point, we were looking at around 200,000-plus square feet, and we have been essentially working so hard on our technology design that we've been able to reduce that square footage down to around 80,000 square feet. While everybody wants to see this building built, one of the things that's really critical, I think, for all of us is the success of it, so that the 150 people we're looking to hire really and truly happens. So what we've been doing is reducing cost in every aspect of the process. This past year, we have produced thousands of curies of Mali-99, the parent, and we've produced multiples of that, Technesium-99M, what is injected into human beings. Probably equates to thousands of doses of Technesium-99M, in the process of trying to validate all the requirements that have been set forth by the Food and Drug Administration for our approval. The end result is, is that A, we completed the National Environmental Policy Act requirements of environmental assessments this past August; B, we're pretty close to having a facility design completed, we're still working on it. Matter of fact, I think in the past week, Baderman has done some more, PSI has done some more borings on the site to making sure we put the building in the right location. C, we've started to basically submit to the FDA applications for our approval. In fact, on, I think it was September 12th, we submitted a drug master file for the process at Missouri University Research Reactor. On the middle of October, we did another submittal, another drug master file for the Technagen, which is our core technology that makes this whole process work. On Tuesdays ago, we met with the Food and Drug Administration, sole purpose of getting them to tell us that we can submit the final piece of document that we have to give them, our new drug application, which is essentially going forward in the next three weeks and getting that completed. What I could tell you is, is that while our competition is sitting down trying to prove that their technology works, and in some cases haven't even produced any Mali-99 to date, we have been working in reducing costs and getting our FDA process completed. So it has taken a little more time, and I could tell you, I would have loved to have seen this get going a lot sooner, but we have made a lot of progress and I'm really pleased where we're heading. Any questions?
All right, let's go ahead. First, is there anything that you needed to add, Andrew?
I have a presentation.
Okay, well, I think for first, things first is you go ahead and go through our presentation, and then we'll get, you know, so we have some parliamentary procedure to follow first. Thank you.
Thank you, George. As George noted, the scope, scale, and timing of the project has altered to the extent that we need to amend the original development agreement. The terms and conditions from the original agreement remain roughly the same with the following proposed changes. First, the original development agreement indicated that the cost to construct the facility would be $194 million. In the amended agreement, this number is adjusted to $84 million. Second, the original development agreement stated that construction would begin June 30th of 2012. That date has been moved to June 15th of 2013 in the amended development agreement. Final construction in both agreements is anticipated to be completed by December 31st, 2016. Third, as the project's start date has been pushed back one year, the number of direct developer incentive payments has been reduced from nine payments to eight payments. Fourth, the company's job creation expectation remains high at 150 jobs, most of which will be highly skilled. And lastly, it should be noted that since the original development agreement was approved, Northstar has been awarded $22.2 million in federal funding for the project, and an environmental assessment has been completed and approved. That concludes my remarks. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. I'd be happy to take any questions, or if you have any questions you'd like to address to George, that's appropriate as well.
Mr. President, I have a question before we start debate or have a motion of Mr. Casper. Okay, if you have a procedural question, certainly.
Now and when I first voted on the original isotope agreement, it's come to my attention that my spouse has done some legal work for Mr. Messina and the Northstar Corporation. I think that there is no conflict of interest in my proceeding on this motion, but I wanted to first of all disclose that information, and secondly, ask Mr. Casper whether or not that nexus is so close that I should refrain from either making motions or questions or participating in this discussion.
My understanding, Councillor Van Vogard, is that your spouse works for one of the Janesville firms, and that the work she's been involved with has involved intellectual property issues, copyrights, and not this transaction in any fashion, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think that is not a conflict, and I appreciate your mentioning it, but I don't perceive that to be a conflict or a perceived...
Well, I wanted it out on the table in case there was any issue at a later point. Then I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, to approve the resolution.
Moved by Van Vogard.
Second.
Second by DeForest. Okay, now that we've done that, let's get some questions. Sheila, go ahead.
Thank you. These are probably questions primarily from Mr. Messina. I am pleased with the federal grant funding, I saw that in the paper, and it was tickled pink that a ward was provided. I think it helps validate the project and gives it credibility, so I was glad to see that. I just wanted to double check, we've been assured again that 150 jobs will be created. Given the new technology, that's kinda been referred to loosely, you still will need 150 individuals.
I'm actually hoping it's gonna be a lot more than that, because I believe we got, we really have the keys of the kingdom to really dominate this market.
Wonderful. All right, and then do you...
By the way, we've already started to bring people into Beloit. I've moved my office down to the corner of Pleasant, on Pleasant Street down there, right across from the Beloit Inn.
Wonderful. Great. Do you foresee any delays with the pending FDA applications that you've submitted?
Oh, no, no. Quite honestly, we had a problem. We actually started FDA testing a year ago. We had a problem that we needed to resolve. Twice a year, I attend a meeting at the White House Office of Science and Technology where I give an update. The last meeting this year was on August 14th, and in that meeting I stated, "If everything goes well, we will have completed the most difficult testing tomorrow morning at 9:00." And on August 15th at 9:00, the most difficult testing had been completed, and now what we're doing is compiling, but actually, when you're all said and done, is close to 11,000 pages of FDA paperwork. And we're doing the last 3,000 or 4,000 pages right now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
By the way, one last thing. Working with Larry, Tom, and Andrew has been a real treat, it's been a real pleasure, they've been real professionals, and they've done a really great job, and it's something that both me and my team have really come to enjoy, and I wanna say thank you to them and to everyone here as well.
And we're glad to have you at Beloit.
Councillor Levy.
Mr. President, I just have a question, kind of a follow-up to what councillor DeForest was saying, and heading down that same road about the jobs themselves. I know he said 150 jobs, and I know you're saying that you're hoping it's gonna be more, and I'm sure Larry and Tom and Andrew have heard from me over and over again that I wanna make sure that when companies come to Beloit and say, you know, "We're gonna have these 150 jobs," we may start out, and then a year later we look and we're down to 75, or we're down to 50. So I just want, I know we can't control the economy, but I just wanna make sure that when we come in on the high end, at least we remain there for a while without getting here a couple of years and saying we were wrong, 'cause that just kinda concerns me sometimes.
First of all, we don't, if you sit down and take a look at the world market, we're looking at 25% of the world market. You look at the US market, it's 50% of the US market is what we're looking to produce. Quite honestly, there is no one else in the United States that is producing this material today. It's all done outside the United States. We have the unique process where we control the entire supply chain. The only thing we don't control is raw material production, whereas everybody else is one piece of the process. So there are multiple overhead structures and multiple profits that are added into everyone's prices, where in our case, we have one overhead structure and one process. Many people have gotta ship product all over the world to get it to, before it even gets to a point where they can give it to a customer. I ship my product across an aisle, one room to another. I think we really have a great opportunity here to dominate this market, and I believe the 150 people are real. This is gonna be a three-shift operation, and quite honestly, you can't run 16 linear accelerators with less people than that. Virtually impossible.
Okay.
I hope that makes you comfortable.
Yeah, thank you. Any other question? Councillor Van Vogard.
I noted on your site plan, Mr. Messina, that the point that you just made, that there were 68 staff spaces for parking, and I assumed that that meant you were probably gonna be running three shifts. Is that inaccurate or something?
Exactly, yep.
All right, the other question I have, and I think I know the answer, but I'd like your assurance is, one of my concerns at the initial development agreement was that any promises that you made followed any possible successor corporations or successor owners beyond you, if that ever happened. Promises for cleaning up, promises for safety, indemnification, those sorts of things. Do those guarantees remain in effect in this subsequent agreement?
Well, the first thing is, let's just talk about our process. There is no cleaner process out there. We do not use any uranium whatsoever in our process. We use what's called a stable isotope, and here in Beloit, it's gonna be Melivedin-100. If you held that isotope in your hand, it's as safest holding a rock from your garden in your hand. The second thing is, when you start to look at the process that we're putting it through, we are creating some waste. A good portion of the waste goes into lead canisters where we let it decay. It ends up right in accordance with Wisconsin, which is an agreement state as far as nuclear stuff, nuclear products are concerned, and we let it waste away. That gets carried away almost the same way as biohazardous waste in a hospital. We do have one radioactive isotope that has a 200,000-plus-year half-life. It's called Technesium-99, not Technesium-99M. We take that, we put thousands of doses in a 55-gallon drum, they put a lid on it, and they carry it away, and I believe they incinerate it, I'm not really sure. In our facility, and one of the reasons why the Hendricks have agreed to consider building our facility and leasing it back to us, is if the facility was to be vacated, you close the door, we think for about 90 days, go in with a mop, and it's clean for anybody else to use it. We do not leave the nuclear footprint that uranium processes leave, which includes uranium 234, 235, 238, and plutonium 239. And you're looking at half-lives there from 20,000 years to 4.5 billion years. And just as a rule of thumb, to make it background radiation, which is what we're being hit with in this room right now, you have to go 10 half-lives. So you're looking at 200,000 years to 45 billion years for that stuff to go away. I don't think the solar system will be in existence at that point in time. So we have a very, very inexpensive waste stream to dispose of, it's extremely manageable, and it's very, very safe. And the fact that we don't have plutonium 239 is a really big plus, because right now there's nowhere to dispose of that. You have to store it on-site.
Thank you.
And by the way, the problem that we have that James's wife is working on is a trademark infringement, which was, Corbinian ended up complaining about the name Technagen, and that's what Nancy's working on for us. She does a great job for us.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. Harry Nettle called him out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 6-0. Okay, so next will be item 11D.
A resolution approving the Sixth Amendment to Development Agreement between the City et Al and MLG, and further approving a purchase agreement authorizing an execution of the same, and providing for a budget amendment and supplemental appropriation.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, this resolution does three things. Number one is it facilitates the purchase of between 56 and 59 acres of land, which is adjacent to, but not included, in the Gateway Business Park. And that land would be purchased for the sum of $1,232,000. Okay? Number two, this resolution provides for the purchase by the city, or the buyout by the city, of the option agreement with MLG, which was the private development partner for the Gateway Business Park, along with all of their development and brokerage rights, which were incorporated into that original development agreement that was done back in the year 2000. The negotiations related particularly to this item have been ongoing for some six months. MLG first contacted the city last summer, indicated that they would be interested in selling land in the area of the business park, and basically cashing out of that inventory, and at the same time, selling back to the city all of those rights, which MLG was granted by the city back in 2000, when that development agreement was put into place. And Andrew Yonkey, our Economic Development Director, and I had several conversations about what would be the value today of purchasing all of those rights, and basically taking MLG out of the equation when it comes to proposing on various economic development projects. And the conclusion of those discussions, which is incorporated in our recommendation this evening, and was, I guess, further articulated in the Beloit report that was published this past Friday, is that there would be distinct advantages today to cashing out the private development partner. Number one, most of the business, all of the projects in the Gateway Business Park, came through the public sector side of the development industry. They did not come through the private brokerage side. Even if a private broker was being hired by a company to do a site-selection work, they were contacting state and county EDCs, economic development corporations, and working through them requesting proposals for development sites. So what actually evolved in the business park, the original concept, was that MLG would do all the marketing, and all the sales work, and all the negotiating. That did not occur, and the city staff, primarily Mr. Yonkey and myself, with Mr. Casper's involvement, has done all of the deals, put together the incentive packages, done the negotiations with all the development in the Gateway Business Park, including projects like Narstar, which is adjacent to, but not actually in, the business park itself. Number two is the potential value here, the money involved. This rather unusual hybrid agreement not only made MLG our development partner and our broker in the Gateway Business Park, but it also gave them an equity interest in the land in the park, and that was done through the option contract. And depending on what stage of development we were in when the land was sold, they not only received a brokerage fee, commissions from the sale, but also received a cut, or a portion, fairly large portion, of the actual proceeds from that sale. And all of this was done to reimburse them for their contributions in helping the city put together this rather complex economic development strategy to create the Gateway Business Park. And MLG, as late as this year, had valued all of those potential rights, to brokerage fees and share of the sale proceeds, somewhere in the magnitude of $7 million. What they wanted to do was to discount that amount, or present value it down to $2.5 million, and sell that to the city at this time. We did not have that kind of money available in the TIP district, did not feel that the purchase of these rights warranted that kind of price, because even though the value is there, the economy has been sluggish, and we have no idea of knowing when the park will ultimately build out. So it could be years before the developer was actually able to realize all of those gains from the Gateway Park development. So we have negotiated a price down to $1,225,000 in order to entice the developer to relinquish all of those rights. The third reason we feel that this is a good value, and would urge the council to consider this transaction, can be illustrated a little bit by a recent transaction. We were responding to a RFP, a Request for Proposals, from local entities by a company, in this case, they were doing a multi-state search, and it was still very early in the process, don't know whether we'll ever hear from them again. But we had one site that the city owned clear, and we were able to offer that site for a dollar to try to land this company. It was a lot of jobs, and we really would like to get them to come here, but the site out in the Gateway Business Park, we had to offer them at $49,000 an acre. And obviously, our private development partner, although they've been collaborative over the years, and they've worked with us, their goal is to get the highest per-acre price they can for the land. Our goal is to get the economic development projects and the jobs. So we have kind of a natural conflict that occurs now, whenever we have the opportunity to respond on a project. And as you know, with the economy being relatively weak, or growing at a very slight pace, there's not a lot of projects out there today. So we want to make that first cut when we submit a proposal. We want to be able to put forward a really good aggressive proposal. And quite frankly, in many cases now, we're not able to do that, because our development partner, who has the option rights, and actually the say-so, over our own land, wants to hold out for a high unit price. So that's the third reason why we think the timing would be good to cash out MLG and take fully control, if you will, or full control of the Gateway Business Park development. The third thing that this particular resolution does tonight is it appropriates the funding for this project. We were aware of these negotiations when the budget was done, had no way of knowing when or if they would ever come to fruition, so we did not attempt, or what the dollars would be, so we did not attempt to put it into the original budget, which was approved by council back in early November. I also want to add quickly that all of this funding comes from TIP District 10. All of this comes from the value and the wealth that's been created in TIP District 10, most of it in the Gateway Business Park, some of it in the vicinity. There's no general obligation or general purpose, tax revenues of the city involved in this transaction at all. Again, it's totally self-contained within TIP 10. And also, we checked, and we found that we had enough revenue, enough increment available within the TIP district to do the transaction without borrowing, even though interest rates are very favorable today. As you're going to hear in a moment, we won't have to borrow to do the transaction. So those are the primary elements, and the primary reason why we've brought forward, which is, admittedly so, a bit of an unusual transaction, but one that we think offers value, and is significant to the city, and one that we would urge council to approve tonight. And with that, if there are any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Move approval.
By Levy.
Second.
Second by Spicer. Mr. Vice President.
I just had a question on the funding. I know at previous discussions of this, we talked about a number of financing options. How did it turn out that we had enough money to just cover it outright from the TIP?
Well, we went back to our financial partners at Elders. We had them rerun the numbers to take a look at what the revenue stream was... And what the expenditure streams were for the project, and that includes making all of the incentive payments, and all the debt service payments that are scheduled and known to the city at this time. When we got done with that, we actually had about $2.5 million of unencumbered funds available within the TIP district balance. And as you know, the TIP district is replenished every year through the tax, the real estate tax process. So even though we're drawing down our balance pretty substantially a year, we'll get our first installment on the 2012 taxes payable 2013. That will start coming in in early February, and then again, every two months after that, we'll get, depending on the pace of payments by the property owners, so that the fund will be replenished. And we're anticipating, probably sometime in April or May, we'll be closing on the land for the North Store project you just heard about. And we still owe about $800,000, $750,000 to $800,000 on that project, because we've had to make some additional escrow payments to those property owners because of the delays in getting the project to construction. And we will have funding available to make that payment on time next spring, again, along with all the other known payments that are required of the TIP district next year.
And this roughly $2.5 million will be going out the door momentarily in one lump sum?
That is correct. We would pay in one lump sum, and we not only cut out the cost of the interest, but also cut back another $25,000 off of the purchase price for all of the option and contract rights by doing a lump sum payment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I would just like to make a statement about how I'll be voting on this. It's been unfortunate that we've had to try to unravel what, in my opinion, has been a very poor agreement for the city to begin with, and I am glad to see we've negotiated the price down from $7 million. But given that we're purchasing rights and sale proceeds on land that we've already purchased, I just, I can't approve a payment of this magnitude for land that we already own, especially when I think the likelihood of activity on this land anytime in the near future is pretty improbable, and as a result, that's why I will be voting no. Thank you.
I would have a question, Mr. Arft. Can you give us a little bit more background on the business model that predicated the original agreement? You hit upon it a little bit in your comments, but as I understand it, the method that was used, the private developer, MLG, would be the one who gathers the offers, or gathers, or beats the drum, gets the interest, and then they would come to the city, then they would start the process? And how that business model has shifted to what we have today? I share Counselor DeForest's concern. However, I would note that if you take their value of $7 million, knock it down to 2.5, we may own it, but if they have the options on what we can do with it, ownership is not as absolute as it might seem.
Well, actually, we gave away our ownership interest in the development agreement, even though the city purchased the land, and the city paid for all the infrastructure improvements. The original development agreement gave away our ownership equity in the project by negotiating or including in there, in addition to a brokerage relationship, it also negotiated the option agreement. And that option allows MLG to draw down that land anytime there's a prospective use for it. So they can draw it down, and as a result of that, they control the price of the land. And there were assumptions made at that time that I think might have been a little bit aggressive about what you could sell the land for. And certainly, in the post-2008 world, the land for these kinds of uses is being offered for a dollar, not just in southern Wisconsin, but all over the Midwest. There are sites available and incentives of that magnitude that are being offered. The original agreement, obviously, was predicated on, number one, compensating MLG, because there's no question they were a major player in structuring this deal, and counseling the city, and there was state money and county money involved here, in putting all these pieces together to create the park. And so there was value that MLG added, number one. Number two, there was an understanding here that if the city could assemble the land and put the infrastructure in place, using the TIP district funding mechanism, that MLG would generate the development. The developers would be coming in, the companies would be coming in, and they would handle that. So they had the option of the land, they could come in and draw down the land, do their deals, and then they would do the split of sale proceeds. Some of it come into the city, some of it go into MLG. The reality is, certainly by the time we got started on this, that model didn't work like that anymore. And as I mentioned earlier, even when you have a private Realtor hired by a company to do site-selection work, they don't go around to real estate companies saying, "Hey, have you got any land anywhere?" They contact the EDCs, the Economic Development Corporations or entities in the states and counties, where they want to go. And they say, "Look, we've got this," and they give you a spec sheet. This is what we're looking for, how many acres, we need rail, what kind of water, what kind of sewer treatment, how many jobs we're going to create, et cetera, et cetera, what kind of highway access. And then companies that have sites that fit that basic criteria respond. And we've been doing that in-house ever since the beginning of the park. So we do all that work directly, and we do all the negotiating, either with the companies or with their representatives, if they're using a consultant. So the whole model that the original agreement back in 2000 was predicated on never materialized, and the work in the park has always been handled directly by the city. And again, MLG's been collaborative, and I don't want to say they haven't been, they've been really great to work with over the years, but I don't think they were able to have the kind of value that was envisioned when the agreement was first put into place. And while we did buy all that land, they basically have the rights to it now, and we think we need to get that back to give us the flexibility to be able to respond right up front with pretty aggressive sets of incentives to make sure that we get put in the right pile when companies are doing that initial split, where they're looking at proposals from cities that are going to get a second or a third look. And that's one of the things this agreement does for us. And that's the real value add we think is worth including at this time.
Given the uncertainties with fiscal cliffs looming in two weeks and all the other things, do you think if we waited, we could get a better deal? Or are we, have we pushed hard enough? Have we got as good a deal as we can to buy our freedom, so to speak?
Yeah, that's kind of an unknown. It's been a long process. We've been at this for six-plus months. Clearly, the company has an interest in wrapping this by the end of the year. As you know, part of the condition of their final offer was that we could close by the end of the year, which we'll be able to do. And so I really don't know. If we turn the deal down, whether it'll be here next year or not, I have no way of responding to that.
Thank you.
An alternative then is to develop ourselves, or to sell to some other entity for development?
Well, we probably won't develop the land directly, to the sense that we would put a spec building or something on it. What we've done to date is negotiated deals. Some of them were directly with companies, like the Narstar deal. Some of them, we worked through broker or consultant representative that was doing the site-selection work for a company, and we worked through them. But we would continue to promote the sites ourselves, which we've done going back to 2003. And we would negotiate the incentives and the real estate transactions in-house.
I understand. Suppose MLG kept it, what would they do with it over the next? I mean, do they have any options if we said, "Well, we decided we don't want it"?
Well, they have an option on the land. I believe it is tied, Andrew, to performance standards, so they can't just draw down and buy all the land and set on it. They are required to use it, and that was done to protect the TIP district, and to make sure we had the ability to make payments on the debt that was incurred by the city during the initial construction, build-out period of the park. So they can't just call us tomorrow and exercise an option and buy it all. So they would have to wait till they could use it.
Counselor Spicer.
Well, I certainly don't like having to do this any more than anybody else does, but I think none of us up here were here when this first agreement was made. It's fair to say we wouldn't make a similar one today, but we have to figure out what makes sense for the future, and as much as I don't like it, I guess I'm comfortable in the end voting to buy out this option, so that if there's any chance of something coming into the TIP, we maximize that chance. That's the only reason the TIP is there, is to bring in business, and if right now we're handstrong in our ability to do that, if we can spend a million and a quarter out of the TIP in order to have the possibility that the TIP actually does what it's designed to do, then that seems like the smart course of action.
I'll finish up by saying, I think that it's time, it's become quite clear to me that AMG is an albatross around our neck. It didn't intend to be that way, but it's exactly what it is. We're tied, we're anchored to the past with them, and if we're going to be flexible in... And if we're going to be flexible and move forward aggressively, the only way to accomplish that is to dispose of our relationship with them. So I'm happy moving forward myself. Does anybody else have anything else to say? All right then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, item passes 5 to 1. Item 11E.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund contingency reserve fund for 2012.
Thank you, Mr. President. The resolution to be considered this evening for the transfer of funds from the general fund contingency account to two department budgets, one being the city clerk's budget. As all of you know, we had quite a number of elections that we had to deal with this year, two of which were not budgeted for the two recall elections that we had for the governor's race. And as a result of that, we did overextend the budget in the clerk's office by approximately $48,000. So we need to restore those funds and we generally do that each year from the contingency account. And we also need to transfer some funds into the community development department, the code enforcement section, for two reasons. Primarily, we had a HUD audit this summer and one of the items that was disclosed were some of the personnel costs that had originally been charged to the CDBG program. They felt weren't appropriate and we had to actually refund some money back to HUD. It was about $26,000 approximately that again was not budgeted for. And we also had quite a number of properties that were part of the code enforcement program that had to be maintained this past year for grass cutting, snow removal, what have you. And those exceeded the amount that was originally budgeted. So there's approximately $50,000 that we're wanting to transfer into the code enforcement department to cover that. Total is roughly $98,000, that's about half of the balance that we have in the contingency reserve account. And again, we typically wait toward the end of the fiscal year in order to make these type of transfers just to make sure that we have a fairly accurate number of what the department needs are. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have concerning the resolution.
Do we have a motion? No, move.
Move by Spicer, second. By Levy. Councilor, questions and comments? Jim?
I'm sorry.
Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I was asking something, I'm sorry.
All right, that's okay. All right then. Hearing none, I'll call the item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 6-0. Item, we'll move on to item 11F.
A resolution declaring doubtful accounts, authorizing amounts to be written off and receiving and filing the 2012 report of the Capitol.
Mr. York?
This resolution is to consider the write-off of a number of delinquent accounts that the city has, primarily for the revolving loan program, the rehab loan program. These are, as far as I know, all CDBG-funded loans or HUD-funded loans. Most of these were deferral-type loans where the loan wasn't to be paid off until the property was sold or changed hands in some way. And as far as I know, all of these are the subject of some type of foreclosure or tax sale situation. And they total about $63,000 roughly. And the community development director has declared these loans as uncollectible and recommends that they be written off. And then we also have a number of properties that the city has either acquired through some type of tax sale or bankruptcy process where there was a demolition of the property. The cost of demolition is really what we're writing off. It was not recovered when the property changed hands or was acquired. And there's one bankruptcy here involving some personal property taxes that were seeking permission to write off as uncollectible. These total about a little bit over $100,000 and collectively you're looking at about $164,000 here that we have to write off as uncollectible. So this is part of the normal course of doing business and each year as we get through our financial audit, our auditors question accounts that we're carrying on our receivable balance that appear to be uncollectible, they'd like to get these or suggest that we write these off as well. And with that, I'll be glad to address any questions you may have.
I move to approve.
So move.
Move by Levy.
No second?
Second by, yes. DeForest? Okay, let's start with Councilor DeForest, go ahead.
I do have a question I was going to ask, I was hoping that Julie would be here, but she could just answer my question later if you could forward it onto her possibly. I know that the neighborhood housing rehab loans, that's part of a revolving loan fund. So considering the magnitude of how much we're writing off here, is that going to affect the availability of our revolving fund in the future? I mean, we keep seeing these year to year to year and I'm wondering at what point it starts to affect that revolving, that revolving fund.
I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you.
That's okay.
I can answer a good part of that.
If you'd like, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
As you recall, we've been writing off a few of these every year, but this is a small percentage of the total. We still have program income coming in every year because most of our loans are meeting their payment schedules. So once again, even though the list looks intimidating, it's still a relatively small percentage of the total. We also set aside new money each year. If you recall, we put the entire home program grant into the housing rehab loan pool plus some block grant money and of course all the program income, the payments that are coming in. Most of those loans are on a payment basis, pay-as-you-go and the homeowners are making monthly payments, so there's always cash flow. Most of the loans you see here were ones that we wrote to very low-income people that were deferred loans. So the principal was deferred until the home was sold at some future date. And almost, these are almost like grants, but they're not forgivable. And obviously, these are often the ones more problematic as these are the lower-income folks. And so that's why a number of these, you can see where they went through the share of sale, the tax foreclosure process, they're just not collectible anymore.
Thank you.
So we'll get you a little better, I can get you a report exactly where we stand with all of this, too.
Well, I believe the newer loans that they're doing do have installment payments associated with them. I think these are some of the older loans that were issued years ago and I think quite a number of those were the deferral-type loans, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Levy?
Just a couple of questions and just to echo the city manager's comments earlier that this is something that usually we hate to do each year at this time, but it's something that I know we need to do. Are these individuals let off the hook, so to speak, once we write these offers? There's still ways that we're trying to collect?
You know, we have lists of these with our collection agency that we use. I mean, they certainly, you know, are still subject to collection. I mean, just because they're written off our books doesn't mean that we can't, you know, continue collection activity on them. Obviously, a bankruptcy is a whole different ballgame.
Right.
You know, once they're bankrupt, they're bankrupt. You can't go after the people once that happens.
Okay.
The collectability of this without any assets, I mean, if the people had any money, these things wouldn't be here, essentially. I mean, if they went through a foreclosure or a tax sale, it's pretty indicative that, you know, there's probably a slim to none chance of collecting these things.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Spicer?
Do these write-offs count as expenses for purposes of the expenditure restraint program or anything like that in the budget or how do these get factored out in that?
None.
Okay.
Simple question, simple answer. Okay. Yes. All right.
You're not showing up there?
No, no.
My question to Mr. Casper, and I apologize to the group, was that my memory is that the Lloyd Country Market had a personal guarantee and I was asking whether or not we have attempted to execute on that personal guarantee. I was told sometime back we were and I wondered if, what's the status of that, if you know?
I think the personal guarantee was for the equipment that they--
I don't know what, I don't--
These are personal property taxes, is what these are. It's not the equipment that they purchased with the loan that they received from the CDBG funds.
Can I jump in there quick?
Yeah, sure.
I can answer that, Andrew. We're actually going to trial on Thursday, so we are trying to collect on the personal guarantee.
Okay, so again, Mr. York's point, we're writing it off our books, but that doesn't mean our efforts to collect some of this is--
This particular loan, we're not even asking to write off at this time.
Right, this is the personal property taxes, not the loan.
Not the loan. The loan is still in collection. We initially negotiated a payment schedule which the owner failed to keep. We subsequently filed suit against the individual owner because it was a personal guarantee. That's what's going to trial on Thursday. So we're hoping to recover the entire proceeds of the loan. These taxes, they're held away.
Okay. Thank you. And that's what my question to Mr. Casper was.
Yeah, they're two entirely separate issues.
I got it. Follow-up to that, is there a particular reason why the, just on the mechanic side of it, how we're able to go to trial for the loan, but that the bankruptcy vacated the taxes? Is it just some, was there some mechanical issue in the law?
You'll have to ask our attorney.
Yes, once again, the bankruptcy was on the business, the Country Market business, which was an LLC. Whenever we do a loan like that to support a business, we would never accept an LLC as the counterpart. So we would always require a personal guarantee.
Okay.
So we're litigating now is not to collect the money from Country Market, that is bankrupt and gone. We're litigating to collect the loan proceeds from the owner because he signed a personal guarantee.
Okay, I understand.
So he's not shielded by the Carport law.
Okay. Right, any other questions or comments? All right then. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 6-0. And now we'll move on to item 11G. Mr. York?
Some good news.
Yes.
We recently were talking with our financial advisor, Ellers and Associates, and as you all know, our, the interest rates are at all-time lows currently and they have identified a number of the city's outstanding bond issues that are candidates for refunding. We have several general obligation debt issues primarily from some of our tax increment districts. And we also have some revenue bonds from the city's water utility. These are actually the last series of outstanding bonds from the original purchase of the water utility some nine years ago that are still outstanding, that are candidates for a refunding. Total savings for all the issues is a little bit over $730,000 at current market rates. It's fairly substantial savings. The water utility alone is over $400,000. It's about $60,000 a year savings just for the water utility. So we're very pleased with the work Ellers has done. With us this evening is Jim Mann, he is representative with Ellers. And I'm going to let Jim go through the details of what we're proposing to do here and he can certainly answer any detailed questions that the council may have regarding the proposal for the refunding.
Jim?
Thank you, Paul. Again, my name's Jim Mann, I'm kind of pinch-hitting tonight. Mr. Harrigan and Ms. Gunderson both had prior commitments and you really wouldn't have wanted Mr. Johnson in the room tonight because he's done with the flu. So I did a quick study today on what is presented before you. You have three different actions that you're going to be looking at this evening, the first of which is the 11G item, which is the refunding of several obligations to the tune of about $7,565,000. The three obligations that you're looking to refund are the 2006A bonds, the maturities from 2014 to 2019, the 2007A bonds with maturities, we're just looking at the back end, 2025 to 2027, and then the 2007B obligation with maturities 2014 to 2022. The rates on all those three range from 4% to 4.75%. We're looking at doing what's called an advanced refunding, which is refunding the obligations prior to their call provision. They have varying call features, each of which range in the 2014-year ranges before we can pay them off. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be borrowing a sum of money, putting it in an escrow account. That escrow account will be used to pay all the future principal and interest payments on the old bonds. Then the city will be responsible for making the principal and interest payments on the new bonds. If we go ahead and achieve the rates that we contemplate right now in terms of where the market is, we would see rates that range from 0.6% in 2014 to 2.95% out in 2027. So effectively, you're going to be, in a lot of respects, cutting your interest cost in about half. This advanced refunding would net a savings of about $285,000 of future value interest savings or about 3.5%. If, you know, just if you had an opportunity to read through the packet, the materials for this first item start on page 15 and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on that piece of the refunding.
Any questions?
I'll have a general question when we get done with--
Okay, all right, so let's go ahead.
Do you want me to just go through all three?
Yeah, it's, we're going to be doing a specific roll call votes on all this, so I just assume we handle all the staff reports and all of your reports on all of it.
The second piece is the refunding of a water revenue bond originally issued in 2003. That revenue bond carries interest rates of 4% to 4.5%. Again, this is an advanced refunding, so we're doing the refunding in advance of its call date. Call date is in the latter part of 2013 when the maturities come due. Those interest rates at 4% to 4.5%, we're looking to replace those with interest rates that range from 0.75% to 1.7%. The savings, as stated by Mr. York, is about $420,000 for these remaining seven years, which is a, I'd like to say this is a rock star of a refunding. Saves approximately 6.9% of the principal amount that we're refunding. Normally, when we look at a threshold for doing an advanced refunding, we look in the 2% to 3% range as being the minimum. In this case, we're more than doubling that, so this is a very attractive refunding. One piece on this is that it is water utility debt and is being paid for by water utility revenues. This refunding will improve what we call the coverage ratio. Right now, the coverage for the water utility is the range of $1.50 to $1.60, which means for every dollar of principal and interest that the utility has to pay on debt service, you're generating about $1.50 to $1.60. The minimum requirement under your bond covenants is that you hold at $1.25. With this refunding, that's going to improve that. That helps the ability for the utility to access the markets in the future with a lower cost of interest simply because you've got the excess dollars available. Plus, what that does is it allows for any improvements that might come up on an annual basis that you hadn't planned for out of the general operations of the utility, you can pay cash. You don't necessarily always have to go out and borrow money because anytime you have to go out and borrow money, it costs money. So as much as you can avoid doing that, that's a positive thing. Bad for your financial advisor, but good for the utility as a whole. The third item is a-- The third item is a smaller taxable general obligation refunding in the amount of $895,000, which is going to refund some bonds that were issued in 2005. It was the 2005C series, with interest rates that range from 4.85% to 5.25%. There's nine years remaining on this, so they carry out through 2021. We're anticipating interest rates on a taxable basis, which means the people that purchase these bonds still have to pay federal income taxes on the revenue that they receive, rates ranging from 0.68% to 2.97%, blended out at 2.33%. Smaller savings, about $30,000, roughly 3.5% on a present value basis. So again, adding this all together, you end up issuing a little over $14 million worth of bonds with a net savings of a little over $735,000. Those are the estimated rates as they stand today. These rates were originally from the latter part of November. Rates have actually dropped. Now they've come back up a little bit, but they're still in the ballpark of where we are. We anticipate when we issue the debt in January, and the sale is scheduled for January 22nd, that rates are going to remain stable, and we actually may see a slight drop in interest rates, which we normally do in January, although it's hard to say that with rates where they are that they're going to drop any lower. We did include a chart on page seven of the handout that shows the historic look of interest rates over the last year. The average index over that 12-month period is about 3.76%. Right now, we are at 3.29%, so we are well below that average. When you look historically, over the past 40 years, that averages more in the lines of 5 and 3/4%. So when you look at a longer protracted historic look on interest rates, we are well below what the averages are, so money is very cheap. I always say to my clients that when you're borrowing money at less than 3% for a long period of time, that it's essentially free, because usually inflation covers that cost over time. Time value of dollars goes up with inflation and it erodes what that interest cost would be. So that, in a nutshell, is the three refundings that you have before you. Again, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counselor Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mann, first of all, with the concept of advanced refunding, what risks, if any, do you foresee the city incurring with that concept? Where do you put the money? And are we betting on the financial stability of Ellers to some degree?
No, you are not betting on the stability of Ellers. Ellers is an independent public financial advisory firm. We do not buy and sell money. We do not do any underwriting.
Okay, so the money is escrowed somewhere else other than...
The money is escrowed outside. When you borrow money for an advanced refunding, typically you will invest those funds in what are called state and local government securities. They are special security created by the federal government for this purpose. And that security is backed by the Department of Treasury, and that, those funds then get deposited and invested in an escrow account. That escrow account is established for the sole purpose of doing, of making the payments on the old bonds. They cannot be used for doing anything else. And the trust agreement that you enter into with that escrow agent requires them to carry out that duty. And it's a fiduciary duty, and they are responsible for making payments only on those bonds. That money can go nowhere else.
And time-wise or dollar-wise, are we under any arbitrage problems with this operation or with this deal?
No, we are not. Even if we were holding the money for an extended period of time, because of the investment of the state and local government securities, those are non-arbitrage creating securities that create no liability of arbitrage going forward.
And the last question, I'm not certain if you either can or want to answer it. Is the sophisticated program that Ellers must have to note the difference between the spread in these items, a proprietary program that you people have, or do you buy it from somewhere?
We actually utilize a program called Munix. There are two main software programs that the financial industry uses to do these types of transactions. Munix and I, because we use Munix, I don't even know what the other...
Well, we've learned here over the years that you folks come to us when you have a spread of about 2.5% to make it worthwhile with the fees and costs, et cetera.
Yes.
So. One question to Mr. York. In our resolutions, we have a series listed as 2013A, B, and C. That's the new numbering system that's not referring to the old ones. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's for the new bonds, they're being sold.
And I commend you for your choice of colorful socks, Mr. Mann. It matches my vest here, so.
It's Christmas Eve.
That's right. That's what I'm thinking.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure for clarity's sake, I is a little different, though, correct? Because that is taxable geo-refunding? I just want to make sure, because...
The only difference with I is that you're issuing the debt on a taxable basis, so the person that's buying it, they have to pay federal income taxes on the profit that they make on the interest that they earn. The tax-exempt issues, which are the 2013A and B series, the people that buy those, they do not have to pay federal income taxes on the interest revenue or the income that they receive.
So in I, are those bonds escrowed in the same investment pool, the state and local government, I'm assuming...
They do not have to be escrowed in state and local government. They will be put in investment contracts. The state and local government securities are only for the taxes out there.
Right, that's what I thought. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, do we have a motion on item 11G?
Yeah.
Yes, it's going to be a roll call. We just have a motion. Moved by Levy?
Second.
Second by DeForest. All right, so this will be a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
DeForest?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Spritzer?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Vander Bogart?
Aye.
That passes six to zero, with Counselor Lukey absent today.
Item 11H, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Moved by Spritzer, second by Levy, and we'll do a roll call vote.
DeForest?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Spritzer?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Vander Bogart?
Aye.
That passes six to zero.
Okay, item 11I. Moved by Vander Bogart, second by Kincaid, and we'll do a roll call vote on this one.
DeForest?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Spritzer?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Vander Bogart?
Aye.
That also passes six to zero.
Okay, splendid. Item 12.
Move approval.
Moved by Levy.
Second.
Second by DeForest. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 If we're putting the adjournment...
Any opposed?
Yes.
I approve it.